In order of pleasure. I'll just remind everybody, we've got microphones that are pretty sensitive, so try to keep the back road noise to minimal if possible. Additions to the agenda?
Bernie, Ellie?
Yeah, we have a meeting today. Everybody has some stuff, so I'll just give you a quick update of that. And then Kelly Cole let me know on our water board about those culverts. You what she sort of invited us to do.
I haven't addressed this before, but mine, what my ad was resolved, like that I'm on the agenda for was kind of taken care of, but do you want to keep it on there? Danny, what we talked about, just with the township county commission, you know, later.
That's fine. Yeah. Good mention. Karen?
Um, nothing.
Are you there, Karen?
Yes.
Yeah, Danny's going in and out.
The internet's going in and out, that's the problem.
Oh, that's why.
Do you have any additions to the agenda?
No. Not tonight.
Is Chris on here?
Christie was.
Yeah. She is, she's just, she doesn't.
I'm here.
Any additions, Christie?
No, none.
Chris?
I do. Mileage and for Tanya Samuel group.
What was that last one?
Samuel group. For the jail.
And I was gonna call about that.
Okay. I'm just gonna wait a little bit.
I guess I'd like to maybe discuss legislative wish list. If there's anything that we want Karen to be aware of, I'm sure you're aware of everything we're. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda and December twentieth meet meeting minutes and the monthly bills.
So move.
For a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next up, we have Jennifer Dushen.
Sorry. Next thing with Jennifer, just catching, you're getting over cold, so her voice is coming back, but. Unfortunately, you have to listen to my voice now, so Jennifer prepared, well, I introduced you to Jennifer, who I interviewed just a couple of minutes ago, so it's been good to have her on board. One of the first projects she's working on is our Renaissance Zone extension, which is a five year extension. So for some of the background of that, in two thousand eight, the city of Grafton applied for the state program for the Renaissance Zone. Originally, it was a fifteen year program. The state legislature last session allowed for a five year extension of that in part of that application process. We have to go through the update our plan and go through the public hearing at city council level, and then ask providers of support from the county commissioners as well as the school board. So we've gone through the process, we have the public hearing in December. Comment, the school board has submitted their letter of support and now are asking us to ask if there's any questions from the county commissioners, and then if you guys would want to do a letter of support for a five year extension for our Renaissance Zone program. So the program basically is a is a tax abatement. If a business owner puts fifty percent of the true and full value of a building into the sort of rehab building by fifty percent of the true and full value, so there's also state tax, income tax. Credits out of college, but that the state takes care of them. We just go through the application and the state takes care of that side of things, so. So with that, I would have to answer any questions or if there's any concerns, commissioners, so.
Did I read here someplace that the city of Grafton didn't? Go along with this?
No, we did, so yeah, we did in two thousand eight, the city of Park River did in two thousand eleven, so they'll probably be coming back in about three years.
Okay.
If they choose to move forward an extension, but yeah, we were in two thousand eight. We've done twenty-two projects in the fifteen years. It's not heavily utilized, but it's just something to have available incentive.
Yeah. I'll make the motion, we approve the extension.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, Bernie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'm assuming that was Nick Ziegelman, but maybe if whoever is gonna be talking, if they could just identify themselves.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ron Burgans.
Good evening. My administrative assistant unexpectedly retired a week ago today, so my asking for a motion to rehire that position. Along with that. I asked Sandy Stark if you'd want to go back to the interim, and she's agreed on a part-time basis.
Who?
Sandy Stark. She was our former administrative assistant. And she she worked today, should be a part-time, under twenty-hour employee. So she's agreed to help us out. First day, she was a little, it was a little bit of, what did I get myself into? But once she she got her groove, I think she's gonna be a real big asset to us to try and figure out some of the stuff that we weren't prepared to when the administrative assistant left us, so. I talked to Tanya and Tanya is in agreement for this to happen, I just need a motion for you to for rehire, and then allow me to hire Sandy Stark part-time on a temporary basis.
Chairman, would Sandy be willing to to do some like job training in with the one that, you know, someone that you do hire, is that something?
I'm hoping so, yes, that that would be my plan, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we allow Ron to to fill the administrative assistant position and allow Sandy to work part-time until that position is filled. Or maybe even into some training time.
Just saying, should we do that in two separate motions?
Good.
We can do that, okay, so I'll make a motion to to go ahead and hire an administrative assistant.
Here we have most of our second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Well, we'll call for the vote, Bernie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried. Now we're looking for a motion to.
Allow me to hire Sandy Stark part-time for less twenty hours, less than twenty hours a week.
I still move.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Amy, second, any further discussion? Call for the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Yes, okay.
Since he's there, you wanna do the the Samuel group for the jail?
Just a reminder, the Samuel's group is that jail consulting group that I was in contact with, and Tanya did get in contact with them, and she's got two prospective dates when they would be willing to come. The one is at your next meeting, the seventeenth, I believe, is that right, Chris?
Yeah.
So your next regularly scheduled meeting, which that is the one they would prefer to be at. The other date is, help me with the date, Chris?
Twentieth.
The twentieth.
It's a Friday, which isn't great for meetings.
Why can't we find on the agenda?
How long will they?
We can, that's what.
They're asking for an hour.
Tanya also wondered if it would be possible to schedule them earlier than five thirty. I told her that might be an issue for Karen.
I I I maybe can get out, so I would go ahead and schedule it.
Like four thirty, I mean, do we want to do that, and then?
What time would be the earliest you could? Meet Karen?
You guys, I I can't tell when I'm in committee, I just.
Yeah.
Go ahead and schedule it at four thirty.
Let's skip to skip to.
Yeah.
Schedule that for three.
And I'll just jump on when I can, and and maybe I'll be able to, I just don't know. I'll just have my iPad with me.
And they're planning on being here in person.
Where they come from?
Wisconsin.
Really?
Supposed to be bringing two or three people.
Yeah.
How many?
Two or three.
All right.
So serious. And then, so we can let Tanya know that, and she can notify the rest of the counties. That's that what we, what the intent was?
Talk to her. I'm not not sure how we're gonna.
Were we gonna do that yet? Let the counties, were we gonna talk with them first?
Don't remember if there was a decision made on that, I know.
I think we're just, we're gonna schedule it, and if it worked for any other counties to come, they could, otherwise, we just can work out our schedule for this one, because we're bringing someone from outside.
At least I'm aware of it.
Yeah.
So.
Give them an option.
They could zoom it, so it's no big deal.
Yeah, that's that's a great option. I'll get ahold of Tanya and let her know that that date works.
Okay. That's easy.
Unless anybody else has any other questions, that's all for me.
Any like rehiring jailers or?
We're interviewing tomorrow. I have to try to keep my days, but I think we're interviewing tomorrow. Three tomorrow for the jail.
Jail, almost the trauma.
That's been difficult. So we're we're still working on that. I haven't had a lot of advocates for the deputies positions, so. Keep working on it.
That part scares me.
I know, me too.
Trouble to all those things.
It is. It.
It was a whole nation.
Yeah.
It's an issue, yeah. Every sheriff I talk to, it's an issue. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Hey, Jason?
Hello? Want to be a commission meeting with invoices from DOT. Two of them for bridge inspections, but. So the, this add was later. Are you gonna bring this one to me every month? Kind of feels like that. Kidding, I don't I don't think, I'm hoping that we didn't get to the point where I only bring you one of them. The one contract should be ending fairly soon. The second one was one that we did for authorized not too long ago, so the seventh will last a little bit longer.
So when we're doing this, how do we make Karen and Christie aware of what we're looking at?
I'll have to remember you forward them separate emails in the future, because these didn't make it to, I have copies for them here, but they didn't get that. The pictures you're only asked for earlier, I did email the ones to them both tonight, when we got here. So the first DOT bill for BRC, BRS zero ninety-nine is for three thousand dollars, three thousand eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The other one is our first contract, BRC, BRS zero zero nine zero one five PCN two three four oh nine. That was twenty-five thousand seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents. So those are the the two that are looking for authorizations for signatures for payment for our inspections. That's one of those things we get every every month, the other thing we get every month from is a new set of bridges that we need to send Chad out to post and drop for changes, change of postings on, so whether it's goes to nine tons for twelve ton or whatever.
So every one of our five hundred odd bridges is gonna?
Every one of our two hundred and seven inspected bridges will be.
Inspected bridges, that's the ones over twenty.
Over twenty feet.
Right.
The other bridges, we haven't had anybody inspect them for a while, so we would have to hire someone like KLJ or Houston or whoever to come in and inspect our bridges under twenty feet to get this, the same radius changed up.
So what an idea, how often do we have to do this?
The state, some of our bridges are to the point where they have to come through them every year now, and some of them are still every two years. The new box culverts are every four years, that those get inspected. On our bridges under twenty feet, I believe Century Code says we're supposed to be doing those every five years, and I don't know when the last time those were done. The ones that we've been coming across that are under twenty feet, I've been talking with Wade at KLJ and asking him to give us dimensions for dropping culverts in, and just making them go ways, we're not a bridge at all. If we have to put in two culverts, then we have to make sure that they're wider and may require us to do some changes where the profiles get a lot bigger, that there's approaches where the bridges, where the culverts go in, but to me, if we can get away from doing the inspections, we're gonna be money ahead in.
These are gonna break us.
How incredible amount of money we've spent on this in the last five months.
And we have used to have to do this, this is all, what, two years, or is it one year?
Uh, I think it's the second year from it, because they were still just starting it some more than, and one of the bridges that was inspected this fall, we just had to close it before the last meeting, so.
Functional.
Yeah, it's the from the tenant, they get through it, DOT just, this program went into place, DOT used to do it all themselves, and DOT doesn't have the staff to cover the workload that comes back on them for doing their reviews. DOT also, with all the new bridges and different things coming on, DOT's culture was behind. That's why the first set of bridges that we got authorizations from, we haven't been able to bid them yet, even though we were hoping to be bid by October, is we're waiting on the DOT to finish their spot for the spots in their culinals. The culinals KLJ has already gone through, we don't feel like there's any issues, but we just wait for the stamps and through process, so we can move to our next spot. There's a very good chance those bridges changed to get the supplies needed to actually double three. The two of them were hoping to be box culverts, one was the bridge in four, but at this point in time, it's not looking good for that construction to happen in twenty twenty-three. So.
But how do you, how do we budget for this, I mean, how many?
I don't even know what the contract should be, so when it came to this year for the engineering portion, I raised it, and I hopefully I'll get closer. I I don't, I really don't know what the cost is going to be for it. This last round, the the entire contract was a lot less expensive than the first round, so I'm hoping that, and from Dr. Brian Fuchs, the hope is that these costs will continue to be reduced. They're looking at trying to figure out ways to help us with with bridges, because they know what we have, and what we're looking at, and we're basically all underneath, between myself, our staff, and DOT are all underneath the same thing, that we just need bridges to.
Go on.
Go in. We have so many bridges, it's just not, it's not gonna be feasible to keep them all, and some of them are working up, getting to the point when all, Sharon had conversations with townships to pick a bridge that's not gonna come back. We may be coming on very soon, it's not just one bridge, but it can be two to three bridges per township that don't get to come back. If we can't get them turned to a box culvert or into regular culverts, we may just be looking at longer needs for us, and it's not convenient, and people like it, but it's not feasibly and fiscally responsible for us to keep them.
Well, can you get box culverts?
Right now, no. With everything that's looking at is very extremely tough, so. In the last emergency culverts, we got, that are the large culverts to replace the bridge in your after township thirty-one, thirty-two, we got those two weeks later than we thought they would, which put us to the timeframe where the ground was frozen, and it wasn't worth risking the bolt washing out come spring to replace, so they're both sitting in the middle of the township road right now, waiting for spring and to be installed. The water board is working with triple D construction for the installation zone. So they're on site, and we'll go from there, we've paid for, we'll pay for the culverts, and we'll have paid for unloading from triple D, and when it comes to installation, we'll work out with the water board of the rest of our sixty-fourty split at that point, so we're, we get to those terms we've been talking about for what the century code is on the culverts. And the train bills, so. This, it just, it just never ends.
No.
Bridge signs for uh, for some of them, we have the authority from DOT to just post it at the closest intersection, so that people can see where it is, even though people can't get to the bridge. We're looking at probably doing is Chad's offering to bring in his personal side-by-side and run that down the bridges, just so we can take a look at what's there. See if there's anything really glaring glaring at that we need to put on our list for things to take care of, so if they, it might just be we're laying up, pulling it onto the actual bridge, until we can get back in to put any posts come spring, but at least then we'll have them marked, and we'll be legal in our end, so.
You can just see where this is going with the landlords that are reduced access, closing bridges, and same time the taxes are going on.
Yeah. Yep. It's not good. It's not a fun time to be in anywhere shoes. But it's just, there's not much we can do.
I know.
And you're after the court town, you just don't have money to keep those roads maintained either, to equip them and stuff.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just have to. I guess just keep rolling with the punches. Yeah, I've I've had to close five bridges since I started in thirteen months. Something that we enjoy doing.
We did warn you in the interview.
I knew what I was getting at when I came in too, so.
Yeah.
Bridges of both counties have been topped for many years.
All right. Any further discussion from Karen or Christie?
Nope.
No, I'm good.
Need a motion to pay these bridge inspections?
So moved.
Second.
Both of them together, Kelly? No. Karen, you second?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Can you just?
Vote, or any?
Yep.
Karen?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Uh, the next one we have is our twenty-one cat motor grader that Sharon ordered. It was delivered last Friday, so we finally have it in our possession. It's eight months later than when the bid first said it was gonna be for from March to April, when we got it. The problem that we ran into with that is that when Sharon purchased it, first United Bank was willing to have had the price of one point seven four percent for financing for this motor grader. For eight months later, CAT's financing rate is five and a half percent. Another company I spoke with out of Fargo is four and a quarter to five and a quarter percent. And First United Bank, as long as our loans aren't over five hundred thousand, are willing to work on us for a loan, and not as a lease, at three and a half percent. So that eight months has basically cost us one point seven percent interest over five years for making paying this motor grader off. What we have to pay off is a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars after our trade-in, three hundred and sixty thousand dollar machine.
Where was that to be located?
It's, that's the blade that runs from Parker River towards Lincoln, so Bob has that one, so. He's got a quick overview of it today from Clay, we're working on bringing somebody else up to set up some of the automated portions that we're still doing it.
George stick, wasn't it?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, so.
He called me and I said, go, if we can get it to three and a half, I'll with it.
So they're gonna work with paperwork, but I want to make sure we brought it here to.
Get approval.
The final approvals, but. That's that's kind of where I'm with that one, I guess the data is 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 finally here, so.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead with that three and a half percent with the first unit. Karen, you made a motion, you guys, Karen, Christie, did you hear that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Well, we'll call for the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
The last portion that I have for my portion of the agenda was the security indoors for these evening meetings, we're getting up the locks, a different set. We will still have to run both the south door and the west doors, or we can just go to the south doors, because we have to keep using the south doors, because that's the one that's the deal, so for the public wanting to come in, they can get down to the elevators and come up that way. Thing is, is everybody else is done, so when the meetings are over, we'll have to do a sweep of the building to make sure that nobody is in here when we leave, because there's nobody on the second or in the basement. So Chris sent a email reminding people, ask them to lock their doors to make sure that they did tonight, but we just have have those things, setting the door locks is a really finicky piece with this program. It took me three tries to get it to unlock and set up for tonight, so we'll lock it at a certain point, but just, it does not work from the application, from doing it from my cell phone, so I will basically have to be present for all of these.
Can we, can we just post a sign on the south door that says if they need access to call my office and we can go and unlock it?
Good.
And make it easier. I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
I guess my my biggest thing is just being at night, and so sitting out there, depending on the temperature we have, being we're in winter, I don't know. Or just put a sign on the west doors and. But um.
Could you put it on the website too, and use west doors and south doors?
So, I don't know. The west doors don't have the fog yet, or still, they finally got the parts, they're supposed to come up, when we had the rain and ice, and it didn't come, and now we're trying to get back on their schedules so they can come and put the pop bed up, automatic door components and finish that part of the grant. Finally, they're waiting for you, but.
Couldn't we leave a sign on there that says this is your south door?
No, west door, we want to use the, I would prefer they use the west door, you can hear that thing open and close from in here, and if somebody comes in the south door, we have no idea somebody's in the building.
Put a sign on there and put it on our website that they do access to.
Call.
Yep. And accessible contact.
Yeah.
Well, we still should probably do a sweep, but. It just. Relax. I think.
Well, I think every night, yeah, we're gonna have to. Yeah.
Do one. And they don't want to be alone in here. So. So.
Yeah.
Any questions, Karen or Christie?
No, I like the idea of just having them call and they can, you know, if they they come, they can call from their phone. They don't have to stand outside the door or anything. Or or if they do go to the door and and know to call, they can call and go back to their car if it's. You know, if the weather is really bad, they are probably aren't gonna come. But. I think Chris's idea is a good one.
Yeah. The west stores will come in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ronnie, comfortable with that?
Yeah, I have. I think that's a good point.
Dude, on that sign, you're gonna put a phone number so they know.
Yeah, I'll put my office and I'll put myself on that goal.
Other discussion on that?
Well, Jason's here. Can we talk about their highway meeting today?
Yeah, sure.
Are you done, Jason?
Yeah.
We, it was sort of my idea. I said, yeah, I picked Jason's head a little bit and I said, let's call the highway department in and sort of have a. Jam. I call it jam session. I just wanted everybody to, more communication and whatever. And I said, you know, I didn't want anybody pointing fingers. I said, it's one year. If we can learn something by communicating a little better, we fed him pizza, which Jason and I paid for. So. Um, I thought it went well. Um, I learned a lot of comedian, some of the concerns of the highway department and. And you know what they go through. And I think we open their eyes up when it come to like they had questions of wages and. Funding for this and everything else. And you know, Jason and I sort of two of the minutes, a tough road that we're, our hands are tied. Uh, I really think it went well. I know there's that picture we were sending you with that truck, and that's one of our wish lists, maybe get a new truck in there. Just look at that truck. It's snowing it. You know, heater don't work and everything else. So I said, you know, sometimes we can listen, but there if we don't have the money, we can't. And they were wondering, one of them was brought up as why they didn't really do more meetings on bridges this year and. Basically, you know, the flood put us back and and he was with all this inspections and everything. Our budget wasn't big enough. So. It was, I I think it went well.
Yeah, there was a lot of good communication and and back and forth with everybody. Just kind of making sure what's what's going on, where we're sitting and going forward. Um. The other thing we talked about is we had these meetings kind of quarterly since I started. And we've kind of agreed that uh with our needs, our portfolio holder is that when we're gonna have these meetings, so we'll let them know. Um, with our work, we especially the winter is kind of like a, we're gonna look at this day and then the snow's coming. Obviously, we won't have had it, but we got lucky today. So it's kind of a, we planned for a meeting and then. Last minute day of can can change for time or whatever, but we'll be. We'll be letting our, one of our portfolio holder is so that we can have more of these type of discussions and they can come in and see what's going on. Have a little bit more sight as to what we're dealing with. So.
One of the issues was is uh maybe be a little more prepared with the sandbags and everything during the flood. And I I thought that was a good point, brother. You know, Jason was new and different things. And I said, you know, if we could just to work together as a team and get get on board, so the communication is better.
I like the idea of the soundbags being ready. I've already been thinking about that.
You're not.
Yeah.
I'm already ready. We haven't finished the paperwork on the last one.
We're looking at the snow that that land out there.
Yeah.
Anything else or anything?
No, I think we covered it. It was pretty good.
All right, we'll move on to Amy.
No, I don't have anything else, but this is Amy's and yours.
Yeah. Um, you know, I had told Danny too that for the most part, this has resolved itself a little bit, which has been great. I've been really pleased. Um, I did get a phone call from, I I think a few of us got a call from Jeremy Lund. Um, in regards to his township road and being plowed in and the county um truck going by. Uh, and then struggling him not being able to get packages delivered to his house because of. Um, the snow and we, I, you know, he talked to a few of us and and. Was understanding as far as the amount of snow we've gotten. This isn't, we haven't dealt with this for, I I'm assuming a few years or not more than the amount of snow we've had. Um, but I I know my husband had commented too. He remembers growing up living out on County Road Eight that. You know, the trucks would go by and then the larger blade would go to to with the wider wing to really get off. Um, things out farther and and that has happened. Um, and I followed up with him. So I I guess I was pleased with that. We were coming home from um. Heading uh west on fifteen there though, and just beyond Minto. Uh, so if you were to head north towards Beardenby, that corner still felt if we were to get a storm or some, a pretty good wind event, felt like that would become. An issue, but like out at the uh corner of six um or eight, excuse me, those have been winged. You know, so I saw, like I said, I I've been really pleased. Um. My only other, the communication piece, I I was gonna ask you, Jason, on if you're familiar. Kelly Cole had commented and asked me. She had been told in the past that the townships are able to apply for money in terms of flood. Assistance and that that hasn't always happened in the past. So that money has been kind of left and I'm not sure who's.
I for flooded assistance that counties get through the FEMA or the townships can apply for FEMA, just like we do. They're doing all going through the paperwork. The money just, once they do their work and they get all their paperwork in, if your site is completed, then it gets paid. The site's not completed, you don't get paid for the full amount. Um, sometimes they don't pay anything for that portion until the project is completed. And that process, after they all the paperwork done, could take anywhere from six months to. In two years.
Yeah.
We got one, the twenty seventeen flooding, man. Finally got uh the final close ups this last year since I started.
Have you been getting complaints from townships or?
No, um, she told me she had been filled in from Sharon prior that the townships weren't getting the paperwork necessarily done. So that it, that they were kind of missing out on on money when you talk about the town. So. And I don't know whose job, you know, she's like, are they all aware of that money? You know, the the documentation. So.
You've got a bunch of meetings.
Yeah.
You know, you you talk about FEMA and that is, hopefully we can get some money with these poor townships this year with bleeding to snow and everything from the state back.
Well, didn't the bourbon declare that first snowstorm, the state disaster?
I haven't heard anything about a disaster.
I heard that someplace or read it someplace.
Yeah.
So there should be another storm removal.
I didn't, I don't know.
Mister Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just um put in twenty more mil- twenty million for emergency, emergency snow removal grants. So how that all works out, I'm not sure, but that's just brand new today.
Good, good.
Twenty million, emergency snow removal grants.
Now, if we keep getting snow, we're gonna need it.
And they have to apply for it too. You can't, it's just gonna, there's a little bit of work involved. So. Which is. Yep.
In the month of, uh, December, we went through over four thousand gallons of decent fuel. So.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, and and you know, in defense of the townships, I, it was really tough to keep some of those places open. Because of the wind. Um, I mean, Amy knows by by my son's place, he he plowed it in the morning, plowed it at night. And it it just. And and I called, I even called my township three different times because we couldn't get out and our snow blower. Um, went on the blink and it was, I mean, I think everybody was in the same predicament, but. You know, it just kept blowing all the time from the north.
Well, the thing with the townships is they come back and hire the county.
Well, and and here. We, we just happen to be going um south and here's the township. You know, the township blade, blading everything. And I actually stopped him and I said, you have to go by my son's place because. The fuel truck couldn't get there to get him fuel and he was out of fuel. And they were there and here it's eighty eighty-year-old Bobby Halderson, you know, driving the truck. It it's hard to find somebody to get it done too.
Yeah. And that was, that was part of the problem with the county. We were backed up with townships.
Yeah.
Part of the problem, problem is, is the county will probably come out and blade three times to the township once.
Yeah.
You know, and in in defense a little bit of the county here. That's by my place. And I'll tell you those trees he put that added into that ditch ain't gonna help it there. He's gonna have a lot. And you know, that was, that was an issue. We said no, and then the.
Yeah.
Yeah, they let him, the planning and zoning, let him put those trees there and it's not gonna be a good deal. And they're all my life and that's part of the trouble. Those trees are stopping some of that snow.
Certain amount of personal responsibility with.
I had six phone calls from township people. I need to get out. And I said, you know, it's not the county deal. I gave you their township officers.
Yeah.
And, you know, I had to go to work, I had to do this. And I said, you have a responsibility to yourself if you live out in the country. And one guy. Only had a walk behind snowboard. And I'm going, maybe you better think about with a tractor.
Well, or align with someone, you know, just finding a neighbor who has one and and not put that burden on. But. And I mean, I don't, after seeing what like we, we were just going through um Denton's, you know, so we send out our. Our county guys, they get stuck or we send out and we're, you know, and it's still blowing. And I think there's a part to say too, we we. Live in a world where we think we have to get everywhere all the time. If it's still blowing like that and it's blowing that fast, I mean, sometimes we just can't.
And how many, how many people are are moving still now? You got Narlock's in the township and that's what, thirty out of thirty-six of the townships? Well, it takes a while for me to get there.
We had, I mean, we did twenty-eight. Last only then between us and Narlock.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight townships.
Between them and out of thirty-six.
Wow.
So it takes a while to get there and people, you know, if you wanna get, you better have a way, cause it's gonna take a while.
I think you guys did an excellent job.
Yes, but I told him today at the meeting, they're complimented you guys on what they did.
Yeah, we've never had that before, but.
Oh, years back we did, but you know, and it's always when you get that first big blast of twenty-some inches, it causes a headache the rest of the year. But you got a little, little.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to put mileage, you said you want to discuss?
Yeah. So January first mileage went up from sixty-two point five to sixty-five five. Generally, we just go with it unless you guys feel we need to do anything more. So if you don't have any issues, I'll send out new vouchers with the new amount.
Anything else you have, Chris?
Yep. Well, that waterboard on the bottom.
No, who's got waterboard? Lawrence?
Lawrence, did I, I sort of took it over now.
Yeah, so when they were here at the last meeting, they forgot to ask you guys to reappoint Elvin Jello. So it's just a matter of.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint.
You have a motion to reappoint LB to the waterboards or second?
Second.
Now we'll call for the voter.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carry. Portfolios.
Do you want to talk on that waterboard issue with that Kelly Cole talked?
Yeah, okay.
I talked to Kelly Cole this weekend and Jason and everything else in in. Sort of adamant, she says, you know, we talked about this a year and a half ago and everything else. And I said, well, we sort of wanted an update. And she advised us to pay the portion that we originally were charged at two hundred and some thousand. And uh. She says, I don't think we should be pay that other portion. And she said, moving forward, there's gonna have to be an adjustment. But that was her direction that we pay that. And then, you know, just cause it was added afterwards or whatever, that we don't pay that one. And then moving forward. She says, we'll have to adjust, which gave me the idea that, you know what, maybe with the century codes and everything, there's gonna be a change. Her advice was that we don't pay that second, second factor, everything was agreed to.
How did that go from, I remember it was just about three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, it was cause all of a sudden the bills come in there. They're, they they said that, you know, century code. And it was something that. They found out other counties were doing it. I, my remark was, I said, you know, I've been here eighteen years and we follow the same thing. And all of a sudden, now we get another bill.
Yeah.
I I don't feel like, when we sign off and something and agree to it, I don't think we should be liable for another bill that pops up. And I think that's what Kelly holds thinking about. I don't, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but she just, she just said, pay that. What, the two hundred and thirty or two? I don't remember the exact number. And I think we should. Well, I mean, I thought we paid that. We didn't, but I don't know. If somehow we gotta find the money, we better pay that bill, I think.
So, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll try to speak up here, but am I understanding it correctly then that we would pay forty percent of the cost of the culverts? But not the cost of installation? Was that what our original amount was that we were going to pay?
Yeah.
Okay. That that's, I I thought that's what I understood, but I just wanted to make sure. And then as far as the remaining part of the installation, she's saying, don't pay it at this time. Wait until we get. More clear wording from legislature or just don't pay at all?
My understanding it was is that we should not have to pay it.
Okay.
It's in the original legal that we had signed or signed off on or whatever. You know, when you, when you do a a drain or something, you sign off on it. The chairman or somebody, there's in that, that paperwork was signed off and done. So.
Okay.
So, and I guess if it comes up again, we'll have to have her come, but she, she was pretty much adamant that she gave the ruling that we shouldn't pay and move forward.
And I talked to her about that as well. And she was surprised that, well, she wasn't, but she said that she wasn't invited that day that the waterboard came. Because she was part of it. It was her and Sharon originally with them. And then. And so she said, I'm sure there was a reason I wasn't invited to it because she's probably the one that had the most knowledge on what had gone on before. Do we have a direction though on what's happening going forward now with new?
Not really.
Okay, so we need to probably declare that.
We're waiting on that.
We've been waiting.
Doesn't sound like that's gonna go anywhere.
It's gonna be no point again.
Then they form a committee or something and throw it back.
Yeah, I don't know. So we'll be up.
Sharon is on the committee.
Yeah, we'll be, naturally, keep me informed. I should probably call her one day and ask her if there's anything updated. I got a feeling we're gonna be left out in the wind again and.
So do you wanna pay that bill now or?
Well, I suppose we shouldn't overdo it, that's for sure.
Where's it come from?
Yeah.
Hey, I don't know. I.
That was before his time, you know?
It'll be more than what I have budgeted for culverts. For this next year, so. And then any other projects we have will, for culverts or different things for townships or anything else. I, I don't know where we, what we do with it.
Any idea when that prairie dog money will be coming? Karen, have you heard anything on that prairie dog money?
Should be coming end of February or March.
Is that gonna be a lump sum or is it gonna be payments or?
Oh, I, I don't know, whatever, when it, I don't know what it came before. I'm assuming the same way it came before. I think all at once.
I I take it as care of it. The last time they give us a bunch of money, it comes out once and then you got.
Yep. Yep.
Well, maybe we should pay it out of something, whatever, carry money, cold money or whatever. And then when that money comes from the. From prairie dog, we could reimburse it back. You know, I I think we got an obligation to pay that first bill.
Would it be cleaner though if we waited until it showed up or?
Is there a specific use for prairie dog or is it anything?
Infrastructure.
Well, then they should almost wait for the build or for the money to come. It's not.
I think so too.
Not gonna look.
Yeah.
Let the waterboard know or something, right? And now we will pay it to the prairie dog company.
And I'm thrilled with it, Ernie. Maybe, I mean, talk to Sharon even. See what she recommends going forward of what we do. I, you know, I think getting ahead of it and having a, so that there is clear to them what we're going to do. Versus waiting for something that may not.
Yeah.
Come fast.
The trouble is two different ideas out there and they can't agree. And then we're, we're here in limbo.
So we're gonna wait till the prairie dog money comes and then we'll get that bill paid. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll discuss portfolios or.
Might just will get them done, no?
I just, Mister Chairman, can I make one comment on the list of portfolios? Um. Just if you remember, back at the beginning of the year, um, since I had the second floor. Just if you remember, back at the beginning of the year, um, since I had the second floor. Uh, we also took from Lawrence the department supervisor meetings and we added that to my portfolio because it was just a better fit. So just wanted everybody to know that that actually the department supervisor meetings were actually under my portfolio and not Lawrence's.
Good.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
So, I I just have a question for Christie too, or or a comment. Uh, I, it's not really a good time to change your portfolios, is it Christie? You've only had that for. Did you have one year or two years?
No, I've only had it one year, so I'm I'm fine with keeping it again for this year, because I I agree, I mean, I think it's nice to have it for at least a couple with. With this group of portfolios with the second floor. Yeah, so I'd be fine keeping that again.
So I'm, I'm thinking that maybe just to switch my. Most of my uh portfolios to Amy. And then take Lawrence's. Is everybody okay with that? Does somebody else wanna change any of them? Except the water district, Ernie said he wants wants to do that, so that'd be fine.
I don't really wanna do it, but I got the most experience with my.
Ernie had talked about the um Red River Regional.
If if Amy wants that, that that'd treat me up, it's not real busy and stuff, but. I would not.
Yeah.
You take the water one.
That's fine, um.
And re- really with the regional council. I don't know if you want job development Karen out of there. Amy, to me, they sort of go hand in hand.
I'm okay.
So I guess if Amy wanted my job development, what I'd give it out, if you guys are okay with it. Being I got the water board, because I I always think, you know, just like when when they helped the Northeast Human Services and you're on those boards. With domestic violence, they sort of all work hand in hand and if you're, you know, I'm still delegate to the Devil's Lake Basin and I go up there and if nobody wants to go there. Being up there in the summer, I'll drive up there and listen to those meetings and I know, well, LB's on it, so that'd work good with me too. I mean, it's a water board issue, but that JDA and that is, somebody wants that one because you're in that Northeast human, I I'd give that up, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep, well, I mean, really. As far as um then changing, I mean, I can, I can keep my whatever I have. Um, the Northeast Human Service Advisory Board, that meets. Maybe once quarterly, sometimes it gets canceled. Um, I can still be on the Northern Valley Human Service Board, I just, I just wouldn't, although. Well, it shouldn't be a conflict, I don't think. Um, I I just wouldn't be able to do that, that meeting, because it's. In between our commission meetings at nine AM on Tuesday, that Tuesday in between. But otherwise, I mean, I can, I can keep the other ones too. Um, except then we have left, um. Well, then, um, A- Amy, you could take county fair, would that be okay?
Yeah, Danny brought that up, that would be.
And the extension. Those are, I mean, they kind of go hand in, and they're easy portfolios. Um, how about if we just keep them the way they are then and?
And Jill did say if Ernie leaves JDA, she had Ernie and Lawrence, so she would need. Someone else.
That's what I said.
On JDA.
Okay, I mean, I can go on JDA too.
Okay.
But I just brought it up, if somebody wanted it, I've been on it a long time, so.
If somebody wants my county planning and zoning, they can have that, I mean, that was a good learning experience, but I've been on there since the beginning now. So, I mean, it was, it truly was a good learning experience.
I can, I can take that for you, Christie, I've never been on that, so.
So then, so then Amy, you would keep the county safety committee too, which only meets. You know. How about the soils?
Soils is, I think we had one meeting in how many years now, it's sort of quiet down. Lawrence and I were both on that and I'll stay on there, that sort of goes hand in hand with the water highway.
Anybody wanna crack at emergency management?
I had that portfolio for a long time, so that's.
At least another year. You and I took the water board, I'll, I'll let you have that.
I mean, Danny, I can take it if you want, I'm just looking at what else I could trade them here.
Is there a place where we see where all of these are or do we get?
Oh, you don't have a. Your list?
Put it in your packet. And I will revise it and share it with you guys.
I just come on agenda first, did I miss something?
You you, you gotta scroll down.
You can get everything under the agenda?
Mine's at the end of mine, hand it.
Um, maybe I'm missing, oh, you're right, you're right, I'm so sorry, twenty two, yeah, because I was at the meeting.
Well, what are you two gonna do?
Danny, do you want me to?
Emergency management goes with the sheriff.
Danny, I can take emergency management this year if you want. I'll give it a whirl.
Thank you.
And of course, everybody's on the park board now. Everything settled then?
Does somebody, well, I'm I'm a Devil's Lake Basin alternate, really, I haven't had to do anything, but if somebody wants that, they can have it.
Well, realistically, I don't know, I need to, you got a representative and I've never understood it. I'll be seriously pretty good at going from the water board and like I said during the summer and stuff, when I'm up there, I go, so.
Okay, that's fine, just leave it then.
Yeah, I think leave it on your name and if you're ever up there, you can go and.
At some point, I mean, I'm not saying to take it, but the health ward, it would be something I would be interested in at some point in the future, doesn't have to be this year or me, but.
I just got it one year and I've only had a couple meetings, so I'd like to stay on there a little bit more.
I think we're gonna have some changes on that sales conservation district too, but. I don't know what's gonna happen there.
That's not a portfolio though, is it? Oh, yeah. Geez, I had it for a while, okay.
Will?
I think that's gonna be a tough one.
Well, if anything else, I mean, we, so we're gonna be seven stone, if somebody wants something else, what?
I I think if Chris gets her arrows right, we can bring it back next meeting and look at them and.
Yep.
If there's any more changes. Yeah.
Idea, yep.
Well, it's easy to do with all the switching all of a sudden.
Yeah.
And then just so I know, like, will they contact or, you know, as far as when meetings are and will I be?
I'll send this.
Okay.
And to departments and stuff, I'll send it to the department head so they'll know if you're their new portfolio holder or not.
Okay.
So do you wanna go to the meeting tomorrow night? I could still go, being Lawrence's, you're taking Lawrence's and if Karen's gone, I can go and then I'll give it up. So that meeting's tomorrow night at six, at the Park River City, wherever, city offices.
That's the JDA one we're talking about?
Yeah.
I mean, I can if you.
Well, usually two of us go.
Yeah, so it would just be you and I then.
I'll I'll go for the last one, being Lawrence isn't here and then then Karen will have it.
We got a big projects are looking at?
She said they had one funding, I I barely got into it today, so.
Hey, sounds good.
It would be really nice if they got somebody to sign checks that lives in town.
Well, see, I used to, and then I'll.
We are struggling to, they have to reimburse us, reimburse us for different things and we are waiting for checks for way too long. So it would be nice if somebody who signs.
Was it Matt L or Bennett that signed, replaced me?
I don't know.
See, because.
She just said that there is nobody to sign checks in Grafton. So she has to.
I I used to and then they got, when I did, they got. Like one of them guys out of Park River, I'm gonna, and remember when uh. She used to come and ask me to sign all the time, you know, sort of hand.
That's why I thought I would just mention it.
Bring it up tomorrow, then maybe we should be able to sign.
So I mean, not you, you were just saying someone that would be in Grafton more often, yeah. Okay.
And she has to drive to Park River or Mint or somewhere to get it, yeah.
And there's more than one person that signs it, but you can either make your own, the only thing you do is put your name on it. Bank account.
If nothing else, we'll move on to the twenty twenty one audit.
So I just wanted to update you guys that that is still hanging out there, it has not been complete. I visited with the water board this morning because they are the hang up. And uh, Sarah was going to call them today. And see what they still needed from the water board. And try and get that wrapped up, I have several people requesting our audit. And now it may hold up his loan or whatever with First United because they're looking. So, just so you know, I've been. In two months now that it's been dragged out and even longer, so. It's still hanging there, just FYI. Yeah, and then we'll probably get it, because it wasn't done by September thirtieth, so.
Not out of our control.
I know, but at least I'm keeping you up to date, so.
Oh, hope that's not the case.
All right, anything else?
Your legislative wish list?
Oh, yeah, legislative wishlist. I think we're all pretty much aware of what we need. The proper channels is to go through association of counties. The two have already talked about.
I am gonna call them again and see if they update on that, I think we're talking about our general mill fund, is there anybody talking that Karen about? Being able to move some of our our jail expenses and all that out of there or else able to raise it, is anybody muring anything?
Nope.
And I'll call the county association and talk to her again.
He's the sheriff's.
Sheriff's Association.
I haven't heard anything on our end either.
I know, I I listened to the talk shows and it's been brought up in Ramsey County and also over by Fargo. Trail County brought it up that their hands are tied and because of this fifty five mills or whatever and we can't raise it, they're. They're making noise too, so we're not the only ones. Apparently, there's quite a few of them that are having trouble with their. Their jails and their funding and everything, so. We can, we will get it, we'll have to do some noise.
Anything else, uh?
Karen, you think anything we should be talking to?
No, we have our first, I have my first transportation meeting on Thursday. So I'm on that committee. I, you know, I just don't know what bills are in until we get there. I mean, people are just filing bills now, people are talking about bills. Um, unless you're a co-sponsor, you don't always know what bills are coming. So it's just kind of wait and see this next two weeks about what happens because deadlines will be coming up. And everything will be filed, so I'll keep you guys. In the loop, if I know of anything, but. But but the prairie dog money will be coming, I mean, soon, I, I'm not sure if they have a, you know, a date set. When checks go out, but it's gonna be there, what are we getting, four million? Yep, so.
I think if that gets really in the mark, we should pay that that water dollar bill.
Yeah, I I, you know, it might be the beginning of March, but I I just don't know, I, I'll I'll find out tomorrow. I'll find out tomorrow and let you know, Chris.
Next meeting is at four thirty?
Is it okay?
Well, a lot of adjustments with this meeting, if there's anything that we can do to improve or any ideas. Everybody being open to discussion.
See, yeah, this works good. Christie sounds like she's. You okay, Christie?
I'm I'm gonna make it, it's been, been too many days of this, but I couldn't. On because I look like a wrecking ball, I look bad.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you're not sharing your your mug shot, so.
We got one with the bad voice and a bad eye and one with the bad shoulder.
Yeah, yeah, we're all kind of a mess.
That's the nice thing about Zoom, if you're not, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I have a big, I have a big, I do not wanna see me.
Oh, goodness.
Thanks for getting everything kind of.
Thanks very much.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll call for, I guess we'll just adjourn, I don't have to call for.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.